Put my microphone on. Okay. So do we all have to put them on?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions about it? No, all those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Rehick?
Yes, maternity leave, Ranger School, grade four, Kristen Blanchett. Appointment, head boys tennis coach, Bill Phillips. Appointment, part-time teacher assistant, Fort Barton, Sarah Ordina. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rehick, any correspondence?
No.
Diane?
If I could, I'd like to make a motion to move item 7H up on the agenda.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. So that will be our discussion, URI Rams project. Mr. Ashley?
Deb. Oops, I'm on, I'm sorry. [inaudible]
Do I have any other questions?
Is the survey going to be anonymous?
Yes, it's not anonymous, but confidential. So the students give a number as well as their mother's maiden name. And there's several ways that you can really make sure if their mother doesn't have a maiden name, etc., or where there's two parents, or there's a... There are different ways that they can answer with their own code. That is confidential, so you can link or...
Right, you folks are the only ones that have it. Thank you.
And any other questions from anybody? Dr. Walker? No? Okay.
Please, the motion to move the discussion of the Rams product. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, Mr. Ashley, for bringing this program to the school. Very appropriate on Project Purple Week. Very appropriate. Thank you very much. Okay. So now we'll go back up to school policy development review, possible approval, first reading, limited open forum. And our policy committee? It's Deb and Diane?
Yes.
You have the first policy is a revision of what's currently entitled, limited open forum. The proposal is, or for your consideration, policy subcommittee would like to change the title of the policy to open forum. And then you can see the strike-throughs would be current language, which would be removed. And then new language is the underlined verbiage that you see in the policy.
So basically, as you can see, we sort of struck the that you have to sign up nine days in advance. I know when this policy was written, there's a lot of pushback.
Oh, yeah.
From the ACLU on that, because it's not really an open forum. If you're asking people...
You might not know you have a problem.
Right. So we really, you know, struck that and looked at three or four policies from around the state. Some that were really went into a lot of detail, others that were, you know, basically, you know, kept it simple like we did. Look, here's an open forum. You know, open meetings law does say you have to sign up before with the topic, so we'll have to have a clipboard or something available for people to do that. But this does mimic some of the more reasonable policies, I guess.
And the first policy was adopted in 81. Wasn't it?
Yes.
I think also of note...
1981?
Is the addition of number four. Where we're mentioning that folks will still have the opportunity to comment on agenda items.
Right, of course. That's good.
In addition to the open forum.
That's very good. Do I have any other questions or comments? You may not... Dr. Walker? Do you have anything? Anybody else in the audience? Anybody? Good job on that.
This will come to our next meeting.
Yes, per our policy on policies. This is considered the first reading. The second reading will occur at our next meeting.
Okay.
And if no changes are made, it will be voted on, accepted, as is.
Okay. That'll be good. Thank you.
The next policy is homeschooling, policy 1261. If you go to page 12, which is the last page in the policy, it's entitled, Addendum Two. The only change that the policy subcommittee is recommending is they're adding a number. There's, there were 14, and now there's 15. Number five, only student, the new language that's being proposed reads, only students who are enrolled full-time in the Tiverton Public Schools are eligible to participate in tuition-based courses or programs, such as those offered by the Newport Area Career and Technical Center.
So that's the only change, right?
Yeah.
From the beat last time? Okay. Discussion?
So this is basically addressing the issue of whether or not homeschooled students would be eligible for these sort of out-of-district, if you will, tuition-supported courses.
Yes.
So whereas before the, you know, the, I think the issue last time was that the policy was essentially silent on this issue, and we had been asked the question. And so now we are sort of answering the question by saying that, at least for the time being, we are not going to, you know, support those tuitions.
Yes, I just wanted, I wasn't here last time, so I just wanted to note that we did change, about two and a half years ago, some of us were on the committee. I just wanted to note that, you know, we did change this policy in response to parents' request, that we make some changes. And whether we approve or don't approve this language, I think that this administration, this school committee, certainly this new one, has had a really healthy and respectful relationship with our homeschool community. I certainly expect that to continue, and I hope that they continue to, you know, bring things forward and have these discussions with us, because it's certainly our interest to work wherever we can to make changes. But as you said, Jerry, this is one instance where we just didn't feel at this time that, you know, we could include them in this particular, you know, advantage. And I don't want to say advantage, but this particular thing that our public school students do get to do. The other thing I wanted to say is, you know, it's sort of two sides of a coin. It's like, you know, people, this is, this is something that our, that the students that are enrolled here do get to take advantage of. But we also have the other side of the coin. They have a lot of requirements they have to meet. You know, ELA math requirements, GPA requirements, testing requirements. We have, you know, how many days they have to be in school. So it's kind of two sides of that coin. And I understand that some people want to opt out of those requirements, but unfortunately, you're opting out of the other side of it, too. And anytime anybody in Tiverton wants to enroll in our public schools, they will have this option open to them. And we would, we would, you know, certainly just make sure people realize that. We'll educate any Tiverton student that enrolls in, in our schools here.
Just for public assumption, two years ago, this addendum two was approved by the then-school committee. So it's relatively recent, you know, modifications that we made to address the partially enrolled homeschool students. So as Mrs. Polish was saying, it was done as recently as two years ago to include them. Again, we looked at other districts' policies in our region. Ours is the most comprehensive, and I believe probably the most liberal regarding this matter.
And toward that end, it was also important to understand that the committee at that time, and I think that was the, this was the right decision, that this accommodation was to be cost-neutral and was to be on the basis of the district's ability to accommodate those requests. It was not a, so that was a very important part of the policy, and I think we need to sort of be consistent with that. And that if we take this up again, I think the two things that we really need to address are, you know, what is the rationale for treating the homeschool students as a different class or different population? And what would be the financial impact? I don't think we could really take this up and say it was okay to do this without really understanding what the potential cost was, particularly in, you know, the current budget environment.
Do I have anything else? Anyone else? Wants to say?
No.
No? Any questions from anyone? Is this the second reading, isn't it? Or do we, no, we've got to read this one again with the new, with the new, yes, with the new clause in there. And as everyone said, we understand and we are inclusive. It's two middle school classes and two high school classes, and, because we know we offer things that you can't get outside, and I think that's wonderful, and we want to continue to do that. So we'll refer this again, then, for the second reading to the next meeting. Okay? We'll have that on. Okay, thank you. Now we have the budget?
No, it's a reading. No, there's no changes. We have our meeting with the budget committee scheduled for February 2nd. They also, Chairman Leonard also, in his email that I shared with the committee, also would like to do site visits on Saturday, March 4th and March 11th. And I said I didn't see a problem with it, but I just wanted to get everybody's okay for the site visits on the 4th and the 11th.
No, I understand. This is for the budget committee. Is it open to school committee members as well to do those?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
It's open to anybody.
Anybody, okay.
Of course, especially the school committee.
It's actually an official meeting of ours. We opened a meeting, correct?
No, this is just a visit.
All right, all right. It's a...
We show them the sites of the different schools.
So, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's an open, it's open meetings law, right?
Yeah. That's right. Yep, okay, thank you.
And I'll get back to Mr. Leonard tomorrow and confirm that those dates are good.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions on that one? No? Okay. The next one is discussion, possible vote, consideration of developing a district advertising policy in the policy committee?
So I know you guys waited for me. Thank you.
Yes, we did.
First of all, I think it's important that we have a policy. I don't, I think there are things that we do now that we should have a policy for, whether it's advertising in playbills, or, you know, advertising, you know, in the concert, you know, lists of songs and stuff, you know. So we do do stuff already, so I think it's important to, like, you know, develop a policy for that. The thing that I sort of was questioning is what, I'm just looking at what direction. We saw some policies, like Middletown's, that were very vague, that basically just said all advertising had to come before the school committee, and it just had to be appropriate. So I guess we're looking for more direction on, do you want it to be as vague as that? Do we want it to be more specific? Is it going to be anywhere inside the bill? Is it K through 12? So we're just looking to just flush out a little bit more specifics is what the majority's thinking, just so we know kind of which direction to go in and kind of where we can pull from. Do we want pretty specific language? Like, do we want to say it can't be, you know, sex, drugs, and rock and roll? You know, we're just kind of looking for some direction, so I...
I think one of the other top points that came up in the subcommittee meeting was the funds.
Yeah.
Where they go, how they're spent. In other words, does all, any advertising we do in the district, does it go into one pot of money? And then to be distributed, you know, by us, the school department, on a, you know, whoever puts a request in? Those, that was a big question that came up.
Yeah, and Middletown, they actually did have it. It's going to, I think we, one account because of, there was concern that, given the way that most of our towns work with financial town meetings and budgets, that they wanted to sort of restrict it so that they had control, but it couldn't be, it couldn't be included as a revenue line item in the town budget. So there, you're right, there was that question, and they went with the, it all came into them, and it was in a restricted account, if I recall correctly.
Because we don't want it, and we have Attorney Robinson back there, I'm sure he's not paying attention right now, but he's for later, but got his attention now.
He'll have to look at it, he'll have to look at it anyway.
But it's a question, you know, as far as, is it a revenue stream? And if it's a revenue stream under the town charter, it goes to the town. Any type of monies that come into the, you know, outside of our budget is considered revenue. For example, when we had the Fall River students, even though the Fall River School Department sent tuition payments to the school department, we turned the money over to the town, because that was town revenue. So that's...
And we think that's why, at least that Middletown did it the way they did.
But I think that's a question that, you know, you know, as we proceed, that's something that should, needs to be clarified.
And that certainly, that's one part, but the other part, then, is just, just how specific, where, K through 12, what, what's the thinking?
In other words, does the money go to the foundation, Ed Foundation, and they can distribute it because it's set up?
But then it's not our problem.
Right, so I don't...
That people can do now, so...
And one of the things we'd have to also talk about is the scope. What are we, what are we targeting here? Is it more of the yearbook ads? Is it signs on our buildings? Is it sponsorship of events? And, you know, I hate to say this, but we know we have a casino coming to town. Is this going to include any kind of sponsorships from them? These are all of the things that I'd like to see us address and make sure we're covering, if not in a very specific form, but at least in a philosophical form, so that we're understanding all together what we're getting into.
And I'm just speaking from... And I'm just speaking from my perspective, is that whatever the committee comes up with, I hope that it's relatively clear as to what's accepted and what's not. So I don't have, whoever the superintendent is, doesn't have to play, hmm, should we let this in or should we let that in? You know, I think those parameters need to be established.
Well, I think to Deb's earlier point, you know, we probably, we want to make statements with regard to things such as religious advertising, political advertising, weapons, potentially gambling, whatever the, the limitations would be, we would have to come up with something.
And that's, and that's why it came back to the committee to try to have a conversation on it, or at least provide some broad parameters so that we can get to work on it.
I mean, we definitely need to address what we do now, but even with that stuff, we don't, we've never, we've been silent on what is and isn't allowed. We've sort of just let in.
Right.
You know, so, so I think, no, I think it's good. I think it's good to.
Well, when I spoke to Middletown, that's exactly what they said. They said they, they had been doing it also and they wanted to codify it and they went, and that does have the illegal, obscene, profane, vulgar, they have all the things in there listed. And of course, this went through the state, so it went through legal. But now they said it's working out very well now that they have this policy and it's more streamlined. And the best thing is it's for extracurricular, so it's not just for athletics, it's for the band and, and one person had the robotics and they were able to get Rafe on and so that was the scope of it.
So it's only extracurricular?
That's what, that's what.
Is that what we're thinking? Or can we have?
What do you mean, what's only extracurricular? The funds or the advertising?
No, I'm just saying.
Does the advertise, any revenue generated from advertising?
Goes directly to. Goes directly to.
Just to extracurricular? Or does it go to buy computers?
Yeah, exactly. You can decide.
Right.
Right.
So is it by charter or statute or what that?
You don't need, you do not need a piece of legislation from the General Assembly in order to do this.
No, 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 with the, you said before that any revenue that was not budget was.
That's in the charter.
Was to go to the town.
Absolutely.
So why would this not have that same?
Well, that's what we would need clarification on. We would need to structure it, so.
If it's considered a fundraiser, for example, it would retain.
Right. But the term advertising, and again, that's why I said we would need to speak with Attorney Robinson.
Yeah, we need to just structure it properly.
To clarify it because, because two things. One is that question needs to be addressed. And then also, is it going to be used against the school department to say, okay, well, you generated twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
In ad revenue.
That's an offset.
We're going to offset it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so, so it's just things that the committee needs to.
Which is why I think Middletown was.
That's why Middletown clarified it.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if they have that same charter provision.
So what happens now, so there, there is advertising in play programs, right? And in the.
We call it fundraising.
Call it fundraising. So it just goes directly to that activity?
Right, it goes, for example, the yearbook goes to the yearbook.
Including athletics.
Right. The play bill goes to the play, music. Yeah, whatever.
Right.
You know, costs that they may have, but it goes back to them. You know, it goes back to the, the activity that's, you know.
Well, it's like the, they had the school marching band, had the band of sponsorships and it went back to.
So, well, that was an issue.
But it went back to the band.
That, that got pulled.
You know, but that's what.
Because it wasn't.
So you need a policy.
Yeah. Because that, that, that did, that actually got stopped because I was on tempo and in the van then. So that's why we need a policy.
That's why we need a policy.
So maybe we could take the approach that you will just specify what you can advertise and say you can just advertise good books, nothing else. Just kidding. So.
I'm like, wait a minute.
It was a subtle, it was a subtle point. All right. So I guess my, you know, if you're looking for a direction or opinion.
But are we thinking, are we looking at K through twelve? I, I don't know. Are we, are we only doing extracurricular outside? Are we looking at just fields? Are we going to have it inside the building?
Signs in the classics gym, Rangers gym, Fort Barton's gym.
So I, you know, I think that's one of the things the policy needs to address is where, where, and I think.
And we'd be happy to, but can you guys kind of tell us where?
Tell us where? Yeah.
Yeah, because it's really not the policy committee's job to dictate it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And I absolutely agree we need one, but we're just, we were sort of like all over the place with, well, we're not really sure what we're thinking.
Because we're, again, I used to.
And it might be that we're not, which is why we're having the discussion.
One of the things we talked about at the, that I brought up, do you allow a liquor store to advertise?
Right.
It's a legitimate business. So then, but the way Middletown worded it, you would, you would, you wouldn't be able to keep them out.
Right, right.
So those are the types of questions that the policy subcommittee, maybe not tonight, but they need some direction, otherwise we're just going to be meeting and kind of talking to ourselves.
Is there, is there something specific that we can wrap our thoughts around?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give you my suggestions. So, so I'd start to say, you know, as I try out how this is going to go, I'd probably restrict it to the middle and high schools. Because, you know, I think there is a, an issue of the impact that you have on younger children of any advertising, regardless of what it's for or what it represents. I think you certainly do have to address the issue of, you know, how the, how the funds or how the income is viewed. And, and, you know, try and direct it into a activity that is not going to look like it's supplementing our budget, because I don't think that's a reliable way of budgeting anything.
No.
And that it's, it's primarily an extra to enrich the student's experience. And then I think you need to come up with a list of the things that are probably not appropriate to be advertised in a school.
And, and who would be the ultimate? Would it be the superintendent?
So, so that was my, so my, my.
I think Middletown does the school committee, but that's a lot of stuff to be coming to us to approve.
So, so the, so I think that the, the fourth component of the policy would be exactly the approval process and it could potentially rest with the principals, I suppose.
But perhaps up to a certain amount, the principals, another amount superintendent.
Our current fundraising policy has, the principals get the initial request, they review the request, they sign off on the request, and it then comes to me for final sign-off. And then we return the, the form back and then they fundraise for whatever it is.
Yeah.
We would, I would recommend that the committee follow a similar process. Yes, someone may come to Mr. Ashley to say, well, we'd like to do this. And he might, you know, but he would, A, the principal needs to know about whatever the proposal is, and then it needs to go up the ladder. And I would, I would like to see it go to the committee, but I'd be happy to.
Or to the committee over a certain dollar amount?
Yeah, something like that.
So that we're not.
So if it's over a certain.
Every hundred dollar thing.
That's right.
And then, and then I guess in the, the list of things I would say, you know, are not permissible are religion, politics.
Yeah, those are, those are vague to me, though.
Is.
What's vulgar, what's, you know?
Is.
I, I thought those were too vague.
Do you want to, do you want to limit it to company, towns that are, to businesses that are just in town or is it going to be?
I don't think so.
Just not necessarily.
I'm just, because we, these are all questions that we'll have and you'll.
Right.
Right, right. Well, I'm, you know.
It's something we need to say in the policy that.
But Jerry's right. If we can at least get a framework, then we can, well, I mean, this is going to take multiple meetings, I'm sure, to discuss.
And so, so I guess, you know, again, I'm just reflecting my opinion.
So just, yeah, your opinion.
You know, sort of.
Religion, politics, alcohol, I heard.
Well, so there, there again, you're, you're a little vague or there is, you know, I think you have to be careful about that one as well.
Well, right, if a restaurant serves alcohol, but what about a liquor store?
And again, it's what if, could the union advertise?
That's a good question. And, you know.
You know, those are all.
Yeah.
You know.
And, you know, there, there's, you know, even that's, it's a little, I could see that potentially being a good thing or a bad thing. You know, it's, it's nice for, you know, that, say the teachers' union or the other unions to sort of say, yeah, we support, or the firemen or the police, you know, we support the play.
And that's why.
That's a nice gesture.
That's why, just with, right, with politics.
Right.
It's, again, it's great, it's up the parameter, but within it, there's subgroups.
And we're not talking, we're not talking na.
Right, that's another question.
Could you have a hundred? Could you have ten? Could you have thirty?
That's a good question.
That's a good question.
You know, and again, I think, because maybe I'm just limiting my thoughts, but I think the football field, you know, on the fences, you know, in the gym, in the high school, middle school, there's some space.
Cafeteria, or not cafeteria, auditorium.
Auditorium for the bigger events.
They can put there.
But, you know, what do we, you know, do we put up, you know, like, we're going to have to talk about size of the signs? And Elaine, Elaine brings.
Little League did, yeah.
Elaine brings up a great point. How many? You know, are we talking a total of a hundred, or ten, fifty? You know, those are all, because where do you draw the line? I mean, that's kind of what the policy is going to have to do.
Right, and you don't want to, if you do first come, first serve and you have someone who's really aggressive and they get all fifty.
Slots.
Slots. Now you don't have the Portuguese club and, you know, whoever else wants to come before you because there's no slots left. So there is an equitable element to this too, I guess.
Well, the town for so long had a prohibition against the signs, remember?
Well, there is.
But they lifted it.
Well, there are. You know, and Elaine, again, just mentioned, are there prime spots? Absolutely. Some would be worth more, you get, and again, this is outside my scope of expertise. I mean, yeah, we get more people at a football game, but the, the field's also used for soccer.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and lacrosse, so it gets a lot of use. That's your prime spot. Basketball, big turnout. You, you know, do you have a floating rate? I mean, you know, do you want to, and, and these are all legit.
Some naming rights to the schools.
But this at least gives us some direction.
Yeah, it gives us direction.
This is kind of what we were looking for.
It's going to be, it's going to take us a while, I think.
Because my, one of my biggest was K through twelve and if we were going to say, I don't know how the elementary principals feel about that.
My feeling is we, at least, you know, if, you know, this results in a fire hose of money, maybe we're going to want to advertise everywhere they can, but.
So at this point, are we looking to limit ourselves to?
Auditorium, gym, fields?
And signs, period?
Baseball field, too.
Well, no, because we already do. You mean not have the playbills?
Well, no, no, in addition to what we're already doing, but I'm thinking, is someone going to be looking to possibly put some advertising on our website?
Oh.
Well, again, going back to the play bill or to the music.
Those are really considered fundraising.
And the yearbook, that goes, you know, we, we should address it, but.
The difference between advertising and fundraising.
Because it goes to the first question, where, how does the money get distributed? Because right now, the yearbook, if we say, oh, the money's going to be in a big pot, the yearbook folks are going to go, what are you talking about?